We'll call a council meeting to order. Thank you all for coming on a chilly winter night, and please rise and join me for the flag salute. So we have a relatively slim agenda tonight, however, we have a lot on the consent calendar, plus the addition of one late check that you all should have before you. That's check number 1-853-24, and that is for the new ambulance. So that would be included with a motion to approve the consent calendar, A through H, plus check 1-853-24. Okay, I have a motion from Judith, second from Brenda. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And the consent calendar passes unanimously. Thank you. I'm sure the ambulance salesman will thank you, too. So that brings us right to public comment. As most of you know, you have three minutes at the microphone. Please address the council. You're not to engage in question and answer or argumented conversation. So with that said, any takers, please state your name and address for the record and stay within three minutes, sir.
My name is Ed Kugel. I live at 501 Thaddeus Street. Why are we going $5 million in debt? Not a single thing about the mayor's plan is better than what we already have. A library is three things: it's books, it's staff, and it's a building. And I think that's the order of importance. But I think the mayor's got it reversed. He thinks the building is the most important thing. But without books, we don't have anything to lend. Now, right now, we've got 10,000 people, and we've got 60,000 books. That's six books per person. Under the mayor's plan, we had 16,000 people, and they've got 4,000 books. That's now 26,000 people and 64,000 books. That's about two and a half books per person. That is not an improvement. Now, the staff, we now have a head librarian who's got 30 years of experience and knows our community. The mayor wants to replace her with a lady who's got two years of experience in our community. I don't think that's an improvement. And the building, we now own our building, which is 8,000 square feet. Under the mayor's plan, we own 30% of the building he's going to build. That would be, we need a building of 20,000 square feet to have as much footage as we have now. Now, I don't think the mayor likes books like I do. Books are special. The first book I got was this Bible here. My mom gave it to me when I was seven, at Christmas. She was a very religious woman, and she was a first-grade teacher. And she knew that knowledge was power. If you could read, and you had a book, you could read it for yourself and figure out what it meant. Now, the government, we have to do together what we can't do on our own. And none of us can afford to own our own library of 50,000 books, but we can do it together. But I don't want the government to do something for me that I can do for myself. It's too expensive, so I don't really need the government to provide me with internet. And I don't think the internet helps our literacy any. And that's really the purpose of a library, is literacy. And any plan that doesn't really help our book count, to me, is really no improvement. I don't want an online library. I don't want to pay for a Bookmobile. And I don't want any extra computer stations. Let the county do that. I'm happy with what we got, and I think we're better off as we are than with the mayor's plan. Thank you.
Thank you. So just so you know, I did buy a book today, so... Next, please.
Good evening. Loretta Saranen, 821 Park Heights Place. I stand in a sacred space within a government building, surrounded by public servants and fellow citizens. This is afforded to all of us by those who fought and sacrificed for all citizens' rights and a voice in our democratic process. Our current political culture is not using civic engagement tools of listening, extending goodwill, reasoning together, seeking common ground, compromise. Instead, political tactics are being applied by elected officials and special interest groups that undermine our public institutions, government transparency, transparency, and citizens' rights. These tactics of framing, innuendo, misrepresentation, and labeling put our democracy at risk. Framing an issue so that the only response is to be for or against it creates polarization, divide and conquer, by keeping the focus off the issue and best solutions. There is no accommodation for the active democratic process of discussion, seeking best solutions, or compromise. Innuendos and misrepresentation of fellow citizens is widespread. These methods diminish and distort intentions and thoughts of good people. This practice of deception comes at a high price to everyone. If you are perceived as not being in alignment on an issue, then wrong political labels are applied: selfish, uncooperative, unpatriotic, partisan. The fabric of our democracy, community and nation, is being torn apart by these political tactics. Our trust in our elected officials, public and civic institutions, is eroding, and our government often does not function or reflect the will of the people. The current framing of the city library proposal is limiting our options of active engagement in a democratic process. As a user and supporters of libraries, I am for exploring and researching the solutions proposed by citizens to our city council. I'm for a detailed report that outlines all the options explored, all the options that were proposed and explored with projected outcomes. I'm for a detailed budget with all expenses accounted for. I'm for a vote on the final proposal. In 2017, may honor, justice, peace, and respect for our fellow citizens and the democratic process prevail in our civic engagements to ensure good governance. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta. Anyone else? Dennis?
Hi, I'm Dennis O'Neill. I live at 109 Talcott Street. I didn't wear my glasses tonight, so I can't even see what I typed here. This should be fun.
Here you go.
No, I don't want to borrow yours, Keith. I get cross-eyed with those, I think. Anyway, I've got a couple things, so disjointed, it's going to bounce around a little bit. But I'm just going to read through this, and, you know, whatever. I've got a question: whether it's the city or district, either one violates this agreement, who determines who violated and whom and where? Who pays the cost of the agreement to enforce it? Both, I think both the city and the district should have some type of performance bond to ensure that they would hold on to the agreement and walk through it, keep with it. I also think we should have an independent contract attorney review all the paperwork and sign off on it. Basically, you know, Aaron's pretty much pro on this thing. He's worked through all of it, and I think sometimes you get a distorted view of where you're at with the public by not getting an independent view. And both Keith and Aaron might be gone in the future, and most likely will be, like most of us out here. And this is a 20-year agreement. If that bond's broken, you know, we already lost two businesses, True Value and Mike's Sons. There's major tax revenues from both those sources. We don't have any excess tax revenue. We're going to have tax increases in the future. I know everybody up there is prided themselves on not enacting that 1% property tax. Well, it's coming, especially if something like this falls through. It's going to come back, and that's just the way it's going to be. If somebody pulls out and you can't enforce it without going and hiring another attorney to enforce that agreement, you're just going to be really behind eight, well, all the voters are, all the tax people are. And they're going to have a lot of people every year to vote for it, and don't come to the defense of having another attorney who left his paperwork over and maybe listen to the voters a little closer. You know, three of the guys up there, except for Keith, that leaves one, two, three, have talked about not being, not running for reelection. So I don't think that's, even if you're not up there, you're going to be held accountable. Most of you have jobs in this town, have spoken pretty highly about how they didn't like the city was being run. Well, you're up there. You're in the hot seat. It's your job to represent the public. You're public service. You're being paid by the voters, not by, you know, I'm sorry, but the mayor or the city attorney or anybody else. You're getting paid by these people. And, you know, I mean, it's, you know, nobody got a mandate to be the mayor or the city councilman. In fact, it was pretty low. It's like most of you up there got a 22% out of the registered voters to be up there. And that's just the way it is. A lot of people just didn't want to vote. They don't like to show up here because nobody listens to them. You don't get any exchange of value. If you called in, again, I apologize, Aaron, but most of you people had concerns, they called in, and they were very much pushed...
How much? 30 seconds.
Very much pushed to talk to Aaron. And Aaron definitely was pro towards library. The defenses say a lot of these hypothetical issues may come up, and you can't protect against them. Well, there's one right there. How do you enforce that agreement? If someone wants to take a walk, are you going to charge the taxpayers for getting an attorney and going to court for a couple of years, trying to get the district to follow through on this thing? I don't think that's going to wash. I don't think it's going to wash with anybody. And we just don't have the money to make a bigger mistake out of the one we're already looking at going into.
Okay, you're over time now.
Okay, now the next person to talk will be John O'Neill.
Okay. I do have my glasses on. I can tell the difference. Anybody else this evening? Okay, at this time, I'll close the public comment period. So we have nothing but committee reports. Chief, you weren't even paying attention. It came so quick.
No, I heard everything. Some of you may have heard about our January 3rd To Catch a Predator thing that we ended up, having fallen on our lap. We had a patrol officer, I got alerted on social media that a subject was trying to contact a 14-year-old female, and it was a little bit weird sounding when he first got it. Two detectives pulled up the social media site, and as soon as they opened it up...
Chief, can you speak more to the mic? I'm not sure if you can hear.
Is it on? Okay. The, as soon as the detectives opened up the social media site, the subject started contacting them, and things got weirder and weirder. They started getting explicit pictures sent by the subject. And eventually, we got on the phone with the prosecutor and got some advice. Recently, there's been a court decision over in Superior Court related to one of these To Catch a Predator things. So we wanted to make sure we were covering all our bases. And following the advice of our prosecutor, we went, she went along with the guy, and he thought he was arranging for an illicit meeting with a 14-year-old girl. Instead, he met six Cedar Valley police officers at the Cedar Valley Library parking lot. He was less than pleased with the outcome. His wife was even less pleased when we went to her house to search his computers and to gather more evidence. So we had an extremely successful predator catch that just fell in our laps. Detectives did an outstanding job. They jumped on it, and probably at 9 o'clock, they started working the case. And by 3 o'clock, they had the subject in custody, and were putting together search warrants for his house, vehicle, and all his property. So very successful, and the subject got booked in the Skagit County Jail. Last I saw, he was still in. He was a 48-year-old subject that lived right outside the city. On another note, we have a recognition at the Burlington City Council Chambers tomorrow night for our SMART detectives. Both of our detectives are on the SMART detective team. That's a group that has done the investigations for both Officer McLaury's shooting and for the mall shooting. And they're going to be recognized by the City of Burlington for the Cascade Mall shooting. So if you're available tomorrow night at 7, the whole SMART group will be there. And being recognized by the City of Burlington is a pretty, pretty nice honor for all the work they've done. Our detectives were instrumental in getting a lot of the search warrants on both of those incidents and helping out in those as part of the team. And finally, if anyone is in Conconole this weekend at the outhouse races, just stop and say hi. My wife is dragging me over there, and we'll be in the 17-degree Conconole weather all weekend long, watching outhouse races. And my wife's a runner. She was one of the winners last year, so she's got to go back and defend her title, I guess. But if you don't know where Conconole is, if you go to the middle of nowhere and turn left, right on. And Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Chief Klinger.
Just a couple things. First, thank you for paying for the ambulance, since it's been put into use and being used heavily. It's nice to be able to pay for that. We have two openings in quarters again. I know this seems to be a reoccurring thing. I lost one back to the Air Force, and another one left for the Army. So we're down two. And last year, we ended the year with 2,282 responses. That's up about 150 calls from last year. Once we get all the, those in, the figures in, we'll be giving you the year-end stats so that you'll be able to see those probably at the next council meeting. And at the next council meeting, just want to make sure we've got a large audience here tonight. Hopefully, you're all going to come back to the next council meeting. We've got, one of our volunteer officers is retiring, and I always like to send him off with a thank you, so. But it'll be early, I assume, at the next council meeting that we'll do the retirement, so. That's it.
Thanks, Chief. John?
I've got a few things here tonight for council. Happy New Year, everybody. Good to see you again.
Thank you.
So next week, we're going to be, the planning department's going to be hosting a Northwest Planners Forum for the APA, American Planning Association, chapter here, and we'll be giving myself and Michael Stringer and Heather Rogerson, now no longer Heather Haslip, will be giving a presentation about the Swift Center project, giving an update to some of the local planners and talking about that project and our experience, and sharing our experience with some colleagues. And then, so that's next week. And then this week, on Thursday, I'll be entertaining the Department of Ecology representative who's doing our community assistance visit on behalf of FEMA. So what that is, is every, it's supposed to be every six to eight years FEMA reviews the city's handling of our National Flood Insurance Program, let's see if we're following all the NFIP rules and regulations and have proper protocols in place, and looking at the ground to see how our flood protection program is working. And so it's actually been 10 years since they last made it around here, so we'll be going over with the Department of Ecology all of the permits, whether they're building permits, right-of-way permits, excavation grade permits, that have happened in the flood plain, which is, there's a little more extensive in the city than we might realize. It includes a lot of the hospital area, everything west of, I want to say, the Life Care Center. It would be included in the flood plain, which a lot of people don't realize, because it's a hospital there, but it is in the flood plain. And then, of course, down in the south part, closer to the river. So we'll be reviewing all of our protocols and permits with the ecology staff on Thursday. It's kind of a big undertaking. We've put together all of, the staff has already put together all of the files that they've requested for the past 10 years. So I'd like to thank Joanne and Tony in my office for assisting with collecting all of that. They've done a good job, of course, under short notice, and helped a lot to get us prepared, so we feel pretty well-prepared before our visit, which is actually tomorrow. Related to flood plain topics, we've, we're putting together a scope of work to have a local survey company do some surveying down in Riverfront Park and discover the exact areas within the park that actually lie above the flood plain. Most of Riverfront Park is, it's all mapped as flood plain according to FEMA, so that is not all in the flood plain. Significant portion where the caretakers' residence and some of the shelters, all of that is above the flood plain. So the idea here is to have that area delineated, mapped, and then we, that's anything that's above flood plain level, we submit that to FEMA in what's called a Letter of Map Amendment, the LOMA. And then FEMA will actually remove that land from the flood plain, which helps the city tremendously, since we have facilities in that area. We'll no longer have to provide certificates of elevation for anything that we construct in that portion that is above the flood plain. And it also reduces our flood rates, because if you're not in the flood plain, you don't have to have flood insurance. And if you can show that you're even additional foot, like a foot or two or higher above flood plain, your construction, then your rates go down even further. So that's something that we're trying to, with the assistance from Mark's department and Skagit surveyors, to take care of. Wanted to give a brief summary, very brief, don't worry, of the 2016 permits that our department has processed. So in total, it's about 325 permits. A lot of those are sort of smaller mechanical and plumbing permits, that kind of thing. But we've had some, a lot of significant permits. We've had 19 pre-application meetings, which is, pre-apps, when a developer comes in and wants to do something in, on their property, they have a pre-app meeting to learn what they might have to do, how much it might cost, and, you know, from there, they can determine whether or not their project is going to be, you know, they can pencil it out. And pre-apps are a great measure of future development coming into the community. During the recession years, we didn't have a whole lot of pre-application meetings. Now we're having, you know, 19 this year, 19 again the previous year, and then a lot of those from last year have, have come to fruition in this year. So hopefully, several of the ones that we've had meetings with in 2016 will come to bear in 2017. Some of the highlights of the permits issued is 24 single-family residences, seven fourplexes, so that's actually 28 units right there, one five-unit townhouse, 48-unit apartment, two duplexes, four mobile homes, and then several commercial projects that you've probably seen being built already around, including JR's RV, some, a couple of storage facilities, the commercial building at the corner of State and Puget, and as well as the 7,000-square-foot commercial project that is getting ready to break ground at the corner of State and Rita Street, which will also come with Rita Street being improved all the way down to the bend at West Nelson. And they're looking to get started on that project as soon as the ground stops freezing and makes it possible for them to actually dig in the ground without breaking their equipment and having problems with settling and whatnot. So that was a little bit, little bit more permits than in 2015. We're down on the number of single-family residences that we processed in 2016 compared to 2015. However, the number of units that we processed is tremendously more based on the multifamily housing projects that we've been processed, that we've processed in 2016. So that's about the summary. If there's any questions, I have the details printed out for anybody that'd like to look through it, but I'll spare you the gross details.
Anybody have any questions for John now? Thank you, John. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. For your late materials tonight, as one of my infrequent reports on our activities, I tried to catch it up from the last time I written one of these for you. In particular, I wanted to point out to you to look at the Jameson Archery Extension Project notes on page 2. Under the director's authority, I've approved six change orders for the project, and those are outlined there. They totaled about $50,000. I wanted to point out, there's a seventh change order listed on there that is related to the bank repairs that I need to do on the project that is coming up. I'm still waiting on final approval from DOT for the proposal. We'll be adding a guardrail along the southeast corner of the entrance to the Roundabout, as I've mentioned in previous meetings, and some other items. And also, I wanted to point out supplemental agreement number one with our consultant Lochner was also issued not that long ago. It was $23,227. That basically represents the extra work they did for us in providing traffic control plans that were unexpected and required by the Department of Transportation, plus supporting this work to get the guardrail in shape for DOT approval. So I just wanted you to be aware of those. And other things, David is preparing the final plans for the SR20 Cascade Trail Project. That's the one we bid last August that we had to reject because of a non-responsive low bid. We plan to advertise that in February, so I'll probably remind you of that again and deal with any matters relating to funding, although I believe we've already acted to approve the local match for that with, before we bid the last time. He's also working on our 2017 sewer project, which is a half a million dollar job to reline a number of sewer lines around town. And I'm not sure if I knew this with the last meeting in December, but we have been notified that we are in process of receiving a $125,000 sidewalk. It's a complete streets grant from the Transportation Improvement District. We've sent in the paperwork on that, and we're just waiting for confirmation. It's one of the simplest ones we've ever received in terms of they're actually going to send us a check for $125,000 with the stipulation that we spend it on the projects we've identified over the next three years. Our intention to design and build that project this year, that'll put us in line to apply for the same project, program next year again. Other than that, David and I have spent quite a bit of time over the last couple of months of 2016 completing an update to our Cedar Valley Public Works Department standards. That's our standards manual that we provide to developers and contractors for work that is done in city right-of-way. That's posted on the website. We completed that and posted it the last week of December. That was stimulated by the requirements that I've been mentioning to you over the past year to update our code and our standards for low-impact development requirements from the Department of Ecology related to our NPT stormwater permit. We operate our stormwater utility under the rules of the State of Washington, which are a subset of the rules that come down from Washington, Big Washington, and the Departments of Ecology and both agencies. So that is done, and that fulfills that requirement that we had to get that in place. We had updated, and you had adopted, the code requirements a couple of months earlier, so that took care of that. Now, we'll be bringing back to you later, Aaron and I will be working on some additional code revisions to deal with some things that we cleaned up as we were doing the public works standards update. There were quite a few items in there that needed to be cleaned up and tweaked in addition to the stuff relating to LID, and so we're going to bring the code and the standards into agreement and compliance, which they need to be. I want to mention also DOT is sponsoring a collaborative open... I want to mention also, DOT is sponsoring a collaborative open house on March the 22nd at the Community Center in Seidrowooley. I was glad to see they're doing it here. Basically, that's going to be inviting all the local agencies here to talk about construction projects that may affect the traveling public in 2016. So I'll remind you of that again if any of you are interested in coming to that. We'll have booths there, the agencies, which will do as we've done with our open houses, present any projects. And I've already mentioned the ones that we plan for this year. We'll certainly have information available for those. The final thing I've just mentioned is I'll be updating the Transportation Benefit District. We do an annual report for you, and I'll use that occasion to present some of the projects that are in the short term. We've talked about them with the tip that we adopt yearly, and I'll show how we'll use those funds for match for that and also how that relates to other projects we have on the transportation. That's all I have.
Yeah, and I will be interested to see, it's important that we make that linkage because, let's face it, it wasn't a popular move. But if you can show why after the fact and that we did what we said we would do, it helps, I think.
And tend to be quite explicit about that. We certainly have taken advantage of having those funds already, and it's going to be vitally important as we continue to execute the transportation comprehensive plan element that you acted on last year in the six-year tip that we do on an annual basis. So couldn't happen without it.
Okay, thanks. Anybody have questions for Mark? Aaron? Was it a yes? No? Go ahead. Patsky?
That's coming out of your pay.
The Finance Department's been quite busy with wrapping up last year and beginning this year as far as payroll items go, as far as payables and annual reports sorts of things by state law. Even though we're a cash basis entity, we're required to continue to pay last year's bills through the 20th of this month, so we can't really close until after then. But when that happens, we'll be doing all the things we have to do there and moving on with new files and all sorts of exciting things. So it's just a very busy time of year for us.
Okay, thank you. Judith?
Nothing.
And?
I guess maybe I should have asked Chief Tucker this when you were talking earlier, but I did have a complaint from a business owner on Metcalf Street regarding vagrancy and panhandling and cigarette smoking in front of their business. He said he was going to continue to call the police when this was happening. Do you recall getting any complaints about this?
Yeah, and Chris Rogers went down and contacted him today. The mayor brought this to our attention as well. And Chris, I think I've said this before, we've kind of divided the city up into sectors for responsibility for different officers. Chris has, is one of the officers responsible for the downtown, and he made it his mission today to go down and try to work out some details. He and I talked about what's our best option. We've got three people that are our problem that rotate through that spot. And actually, we've been, I've been working with our prosecutor, Pat Hayden, on one of them. That's a chronic drinking issue. So Chris is working out some details with that. So we're on that one, trying to figure out what's our best option.
Okay. Great.
If I may just follow up on that. Chief Tucker, there's that, where the Gateway Hotel was, that mini mart is selling, or I've seen sell to those individuals, so.
Right.
Recently.
The mayor talked to me about that as well, and that may be a visit that Jason and I need to do once again to let him know that we'll be taking action against their liquor license if they're selling to intoxicated persons. Can't stop people from legally carrying out their business, but we can actually strongly suggest they don't contribute to problems downtown. And those people that we're dealing with, when they're going to buy beer, they're chronically intoxicated, so.
Yeah.
We'll work on that.
Go ahead, Brett. Anything else?
You're skipping these people?
No. Well, yes, but I'm getting, coming back to them.
Okay, so, well, I guess, I don't watch TV, but my mom says she saw on the news that the tree decorator in Seattle downtown for their holiday tree is moving to Seidrowooley. And I was thinking we should somehow get him to help us out with our tree, maybe. It'd be kind of cool to, you know, get this Seattle pro to help us in our small town. But.
That'd be awesome.
The second, oh, I think we were talking about streetlights recently and what to do, maybe place some more, weren't we? But I was thinking, it's so dark in the alleys, if you had just one at each alley intersection, it would greatly improve the visibility of people who access alleys in our downtown.
Which alleys are you talking?
All alleys. I mean, they're, they're just that, you know, between corner and corner, like, let's say this mine in particular, between Warner and Talcott, that alley, it's just, at night, it's dark. And I assume that's what all alleys are like at the intersection, and I just think.
That can also come out of your pay.
What's that? I don't, I don't want it at mine. I don't want it at mine, but what I'm saying is, I think alleyways, if we're going to place them anywhere, if we're going to spend money on new streetlights, I think I remember hearing a conversation like that. But alleyways, one at, in that intersection alleyway in the downtown core, I think is a good spot.
Yeah, there's problem areas we can look at, and putting one in every alley is probably way outside the scope. Remember, when we switched to LEDs, we were hoping that our return on that investment would be four or five years. I don't know if we've got there yet, but.
We're not quite there yet. The other issue with alleys, because we looked at this before, is there often aren't utility poles in those locations. So the cheapest lights for the city run, what, about $25 a month, $26 a month as a scheduled streetlight service after you buy them. They go on existing power poles that have power on them, and some power poles don't have line volt, you know, the correct voltage to run lighting, so there's an additional cost to run power to them. Same with downtown. We've looked extensively down there, especially about, I don't know, maybe eight to 10 years ago, when the Boondocks was in town and some other things were going on about how we could get more light. Once you start setting power poles, your price goes way up. And I, I don't remember the exact number from the budget. I think we're about $120,000 a year for city street lighting for just under 1,000 lights. So that's the challenge that we face, is each new light is a scheduled monthly cost forever. And if we were to hit all those, you know, I think you'd easily add hundreds of lights. So I don't know, it seems to me if that's a strategic goal of the council, that would be a good committee conversation about identifying target areas so we could work out cost estimates, and then you could consider how we would pay for that.
And lastly, in our packet, there was a kind of a update on code enforcement and kind of messy properties before and after. But I had a question about cars parking on the city street, even if they're licensed, I guess, or currently tabbed, what if they're just kind of permanently attached to the street, you know, maybe flat tires? Is that a code enforcement issue, or are that you are allowed to have a car currently licensed?
They can't park them definitely on the street, so I can't remember. Did we bring that code modification towards the end of the year?
I'm not sure what law it got in there.
We had, we had language that was fairly new to the city that required 120, no, I think it was 10 days, it was 10 days of no action, and then it required three citations without court appeal, and we could yard them out. And so what we're trying to do is shorten that process to be a little bit more reasonable, something in the neighborhood of a 72-hour, kind of a three-day scenario to address that type of vehicle. So there's a criteria for immediate summary removal, you know, that would be the expired tabs or inoperable vehicle. But even those, we try to give fair warning to folks, and some of them have been parked so long, you know, there's grass growing between the tire and the asphalt, you know, that the property owner actually comes out and weed eats year after year. So it's not really fair to show up and surprise them. We give them a heads up before those get yarded out. After, look, I can't remember if we brought you that code amendment, or if that's one that's still pending to come to you that would make the process of vehicles simply overstaying their welcome, not operating anymore, make those vehicles subject to impoundment at the discretion of code enforcement.
Well, there's, those pictures remind me of a constituent complaint about, I think, Jamison and the 300 block, I believe.
Oh, is that where the school bus is?
It seems like they, it's like garbage storage. The cars are there just to store stuff, and, and so I, and one, it's, every time I drive past, it's, I mean, the tires are completely flat, so.
So for council, what Brett's talking about is on page 93 of your packet, and it really highlights the good work that Officer Carr's done all year to clean those up. There's a bunch of before and after pictures there, and the public can get those at the website too with the packet. Anything else, Brett?
No, thanks.
I'd just mention one more thing on that, which is Officer Carr's working on one right now that is much like you described, a pickup truck, but it's full of garbage. So they loaded up a dump run, never left, and it's been there for, you know, I think a period of maybe more than a year. So we haven't yet gone through a particular process of code enforcement that involves a warrant of abatement through the Superior Court, and this may be the time that we learn that model. It'll be, be new to our experience where we actually go in, we have to file lawsuits, serve, go to Superior Court, you get the warrant of abatement, but then at the end of the process, with that warrant, you enter the private property, abate the nuisance, then the costs of that are then added on to the property owner's tax bill and collected in the same fashion as a property tax. So it's a long process, but theoretically, the city gets the dollars back that were expended to clean up the property. Now, of course, like all code enforcement cases, our goal is compliance, and we work at every step to encourage the property owner to just go empty the truck of the garbage. But, you know, if you see properties like that, you know, the issues are rats, the issues are neighbor views and unsightly odors, and, you know, all of those issues, that's why we're focused on them. So let us know.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brett. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Rick?
Kudos to all city crew and volunteers who enhanced downtown during the holidays. Nathan and his crew jumped on things, and it looked good. And specifically to the street crew for their jumping on the snow removal when it came. They got on it early and did a good job of keeping major arteries pretty good and some of the side streets, so. Had some complaints about that the first time with snow, and the second time, they were all over it, so it helped.
Good.
And special recognition should go out to Joanne Lazaron for the decorations on the light standards. She works with some of the Janiki Boys to acquire the materials and actually get those up on the poles. And it's kind of like your job. It's really cold on the fingertips and not that much fun after you've done it enough times. I'm talking, for the public's reference, I'm not talking about Rick's day job, I'm talking about his many years of service in doing the reader board at the interest of his.
I'm glad you clarified that.
After this cold snap, I'm going to pursue getting, with the school district, getting an electronic reader board. Those letters and things, they freeze to that black plastic. When it rains, they suck on there, but when it freezes, they're impossible to get off. That's why it hadn't been changed for like a month, because I just can't get them off. And I'm beaten on that thing, and that thing's just rattling, and I'm wondering if I'm going to break that back on that, so. So it's time for a new reader board.
Agreed.
Agreed. Okay, Julia?
I don't know.
Okay, well, I'll start with Nathan and the road crew. That early plowing made a big difference. I did have one complaint from a lady who was very angry that we hadn't plowed her street, and it was, it's a private street, so it didn't seem to make any difference to her. She wanted to know why the heck she paid taxes if I wasn't going to plow that road. Couldn't explain it. Chuck, I want to thank you. Chuck is stepping down from Citizens Patrol after many, many years, and I guess you'll be a reserve if they need you back, but I thank you for all the work you did on that and helping me out. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I enjoyed it, but my, my wife, she's not able to get out and ride with me anymore, so that's why I resigned. I turned my services over to the senior center, so I'm going to be doing wheels on wheels now. And if anybody out in the audience has any spare time, well, they need drivers, they need all the help they can get, so. No, I told Tamara that, you know, I'm always there if she needs me calling.
Thanks for all you did. And lastly, I was down at the river tonight taking pictures of the moon, and I can tell you, fishing game is out there because they wanted to know what the heck I was doing down at the river at night, so that's a good thing. All right. Any oh, by the ways, without objection, I will adjourn this meeting.